Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to welcome you to the regular Pointer in a City Council monthly meeting of July twenty-sixth of two thousand and twenty-two. We'll commence the meeting at six oh two P M. If I can get a roll call, please.
Sure, Councilmember Wasserman.
Here.
Councilmember Kugel.
Here.
Councilmember Dobbins.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Berkey.
Here.
Mayor Ignacio.
There, here.
Also present are City Manager Paul Anderson, Deputy City Clerk Gina Javis, City Attorney Jenny Chandler.
Excellent. Thank you very much. My reading this month's gonna be pretty short. I felt it was perfect for tonight's agenda. Coming together is a beginning, keeping together is progress, and working together is success. Those words spoken by Henry Ford. Folks, you've had an opportunity to take a look at the agenda this evening, and if there's questions or comments, I would like to entertain those after a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
I'll move to adopt the agenda.
I got a motion from Vice Mayor Berkey and a second from Councilmember Wasserman. Are there any changes, amendments to the agenda by council? What about by staff? Okay, and if there's any questions from the public, like with all of our agenda items, please use the raise hand feature, which I believe it's star six on your phone. Is that right, Paul? Yeah, star six to unmute and star nine to raise your hand. That's how it works. Not seeing any discussion on the agenda. Can I get a roll call for approval?
Yeah, Councilmember Wasserman.
Yes.
Councilmember Kugel.
Yes.
Councilmember Dobbins.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Berkey.
Yes.
Mayor Ignacio.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. This evening, I'd like to introduce or invite Lieutenant J D Comer from the Mendocino County Sheriff's Office to provide us with an update.
Good evening. I know the sheriff is in a poor cell area and he's trying to tune in. But in the meantime, I'm actually currently over in Willets on another situation, so I don't have a full report for your month. But fortunately, I thought the meeting was last night, so I I prepared for last night, so I got some stuff for memory or from memory. I know there was twenty-seven calls for service over the last month. And the the biggest bunch of calls that are important to bring up is we had a uptick in burglaries as well as other theft-related stuff, and that would include two vehicle thefts from the city of Point Arena. And so other calls for service outside of that, we had a we had a domestic, we had suspicious circumstances. We also had a call related to a welfare check. Everything else is pretty low-key. So I do know that we are doing some follow-up on a daily basis down there on a couple of burglaries. One one is outside the city of Point Arena, but the players involved, I can tell you that we identified her from out of the area. So I'd remind everybody to stay cognitive of your surroundings and and make sure you know that you lock your vehicle, you lock your house up when you leave and and take those extra safety precautions because you just never know. And if you do see anything that's out of the ordinary, you know, people that you don't recognize in the community that might not be in a location that you think is a location that they should be in, please report that to us and let us know. So it might possibly have a relationship to what we're looking into current.
It's an excellent report. As always, I just want to remind the public that the Sheriff's Office continues to encourage you to contact them through the dispatch center, nine-one-one if it's an emergency, or use the regular phone number if it's informational, and there is no reason that they would ever turn a call away or be upset with you calling. Is that still the case, L D?
That is correct. Yeah, please, please be our eyes. When we don't have eyes on that area, you might be occupying, so. And other than that, if I know the sheriff has was able to join, does anybody have any questions for me before I get off here because I'm gonna have to move on to something else? Go ahead.
I'd like to ask that we we announce and and post what the regular other the alternative number is besides nine-one-one.
Yeah, so again. Yeah, so the the best non-emergency number to call from the Point Arena area would be seven zero seven nine six one two four two one. Or alternate number would be seven zero seven four six three four zero eight six.
And those respectively are Fort Bragg Office and the Ukiah Office.
Yeah, those both of those numbers, I gave you the first one because it's more local to the coast, even though it's a Fort Bragg prefix. Both numbers go directly to our dispatch center, which is twenty-four seven.
Excellent. Any other questions for Lieutenant Comer? Thank you, J D, for being here and have a safe evening.
All right. Thank you all. Have a good night.
Before we drop off this, I thought I saw.
Sheriff Kendall is on.
There he is. There he is. Good evening, Matt.
Good evening. How are you?
Doing good. Doing real good. How are you?
Well, a little tired. I'm down right at the Sonoma County line looking at this fire that kicked off on the one-on-one, hoping that it gets beat down pretty quick, but they're hitting it pretty hard with a lot of aircraft right now. I'm biting my nails off because it could it if it hits the canopy, it just might be able to pick up legs and go for a run. Right now, it's kind of been a brush pile, so I'm gonna keep my fingers crossed the Cal Fire stays with it, and they're doing a good job so far. So just a few high-level things at the Sheriff's Office, and I'm sorry, I had so much trouble trying to find some cell service down here. Couple of high-level things at the Sheriff's Office. We've got some good things going on, especially in our jail. I don't know if everybody saw the 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 posts and whatnot that were going out from Carolina Coops and the work that we've been doing over there. But also, we've got a full-time gardener now, and so we're having, I mean, I've got to tell you, the the jail grounds are absolutely beautiful at this point, and the ladies and men who are working over there, you know, working in our garden crew and whatnot, are really getting a a deep education into this, too. This gardener that we've hired has a an extensive background in in soils biology and things like that. It's it's mind-boggling how much information these folks are taking in and doing a really good job. We were able to hire our third person behavioral health, which is the third person for that program that we've been doing where we're putting a first responder, you know, a deputy sheriff with a behavioral health worker, and they're going with us out to a lot of these calls, and they're showing up with a big bag of tools that 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 Joe Average Deputy Sheriff doesn't have. They've got tools and education. They just did some really quick calculations early in the month before a MAC meeting. And it looks like we have cut down the hours-wise by about sixty percent. And I think that we're having a better service to the community, working with these folks because they are not deteriorating into that crisis where we're meeting them halfway and making they've got what they need. So those that ounce of prevention is really turning out to be worth a pound of cure. And and I'm happy with it. I'm I'm really super stoked about our work together with behavioral health on that. The build-out of the jail, new wing of the jail is going really well, and I think that's gonna provide greater services to those who are incarcerated, especially those folks who have severe mental health and 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 other issues. I think that we're gonna get somewhere with that. So I'm keeping my fingers crossed that this economy does not, you know, drive a couple of other things. I'm sure that J D brought this up. We're beginning to mail theft again. So I don't know if you brought it up before I got into the lookout for your neighbors, you know, in a fact that I wanted to throw out there is, you know, fire, fire, fire. It seems like we're getting fires every day. Everything that we do, we need to think about, you know, how does this impact our homes, our neighbors? Let's put some thought into it before we go run the lawnmower, the weed eater, things like that. So I'll be happy to answer any questions if anybody has anything. As always, you know, on the South Coast, we have a lot of neighbors who are looking out for each other and being our eyes and ears on the street, and I really appreciate it. It's these good partnerships with our communities. They're gonna serve us the best.
Excellent. Appreciate that, Matt. Now, before I go to Jennifer, is there anyone from the council that has a question for Sheriff Kendall? Okay, Barbara.
Yes, Sheriff Kendall, you mentioned a third behavioral specialist that's been hired by the county, and is that part of the Measure B? Proceeds that that is that paying for that position?
Yes, that those three positions were funded by Measure B.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm just gonna add one little piece in about your gardening thing. I'm glad to hear about that, but I thought I saw something recently, a few months back, that they learned a little bit about beekeeping, too. Is that right?
Oh, yeah, we I I teach a class over there once a week, and it deals with, you know, I got him some books and and some different literature. And so they do some bookwork when they're back over in their modules, and then we go over it and we do some some reading and and things like that, and then we do about three hours a week hands-on, and I gotta tell you, I don't know what we're gonna wind up doing with all the honey, so there's going to be a lot of it this year. We've got honey supers that I got a couple of really strong young men over there, and I let them lift them off the beehives because I'm not as young as what I once was.
Well, that's great. Jennifer, do you want to unmute and say good evening?
Yes, good evening. I just wanted to make sure that the sheriff or deputy or representative knew about the fire safe meeting on Thursday. I don't know, Paul, if you got to tell them about that and see if they could show up. Maybe you could fill them in on that one.
Okay, Sheriff, did you hear the comment? There's a fire safe meeting over here in Point Arena on Thursday. I think I can get Paul to send you the information if he hasn't already.
That would be great, and I don't know if Garrett from the Office of Emergency Services has already got the information, but we will have some representative there.
Thanks so much. Sheriff, be safe out there and don't get burned.
Thank you so much. You guys have a wonderful evening.
Thank you very much. All right, at this point, we have any other council reports for city-related meetings or committees or commission reports? Vice Mayor Berkey.
Yes, as usual, I have been attending the E D F C meetings, and that's the Economic Development and Finance Corporation, I mean, you know, Lake and Sonoma Counties. And we have been experiencing difficulty in achieving a quorum, so we've been trying to find ways to reengage our board and make our meetings more interesting and, you know, still accomplish business, but have something extra for our members. And what we've done is reached out to our some of our nonprofit partners and have them give a presentation at the beginning of our meeting, and that's been really, really interesting, and one of them was with the Food Hub. And one thing that I learned that was really kind of mind-blowing is that small family farms in Mendocino County are usually less than one acre. And so, you know, when you think about where you're spending your money for vegetables and groceries, really think about your small family farm and supporting them and shop the farmers' markets and shop whoever has a food stand like at Lisa's Luscious, and really, you know, give something to our community through your grocery shopping. So that's that. And then I also wanted to comment on Harbor Fest, which is coming up on Sunday, September fourth. And we started our planning process and have everything kind of chugging along, but as usual, we're going to need volunteers. So I'll be on the telephone, probably calling everybody on this meeting to see if you can help with selling tickets or working in a food booth or maybe being a bartender or some other fun job that we can cook up for you. So if you want to be preemptive, call me first, and it'll save me calling you. So anyway, that's on September fourth, and it's our annual fundraiser for the Point Arena Pier. That's it.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Berkey.
Jenny.
City.
Did you have a question for me?
How about I run the meeting? Jenny, can you unmute for us, please?
Just wanted to remind Council Vice Mayor Berkey that A B C has changed their rules, and if you're going to bartend now at a a public event, you actually have to take their class. I learned this the hard way because I'm taking the class.
I got my class notice here, too. We I I know exactly what you're talking about. It just went into effect this month.
It's August thirty-first, I believe, is when you have to be certified in order to pour.
Thanks for the heads up.
Yeah, and they're gonna start doing compliance checks as soon as September first. It says, so. Yeah, I got one of those notices from the A B C, too. Anyone else? We're gonna move on to section six, which is privilege of the floor. This is time for members of the public who wish to be heard on matters that do not appear on tonight's agenda. The council's policy is to limit each speaker to three minutes pursuant to the Brown Act. The city council will not be taking action on items that do not appear on the agenda. Please note that you also have an opportunity to speak on items that are on the agenda subsequent to their presentation. With that, would anyone like to use the raise hand feature? Be recognized. I'll be asking your name for the audio record for privilege of the floor. We're gonna give it a few seconds. Privilege of the floor. I'm gonna recognize Jennifer Smallwood.
Okay, I didn't see it on the agenda, and you had asked last month for a report back about Fire Safe Point Arena Council, Point Arena Fire Safe Council. And so the report is that Thursday this week, Paul and I put together a gathering of whoever shows up to inform the community about resources for emergencies. And it's not, it's for fire, but it's for everything, and it is not really gonna be directed at people that usually you hear the, you know, hundred-foot defensible space. It's not that crew. It's people that live in town, businesses that are in town. It'll sort of be directed to to the kind of needs that we have as a town or the city more than people outside the city. Of course, the people that live outside the city are absolutely welcome to to come, and as you heard, we invited the sheriff. I've spoken to people at the high school so they can give us some information about our Red Cross evacuation center that they are supposed to be. You think Paul or somebody from the city is gonna talk about what resources the city has and, you know, who else?
I'll ask you a question, Jennifer. You told me it's Thursday. Can you give the public a time and a place?
Yes, Thursday at five o'clock. It's at the Point Arena Fire Station on Lake Street, right by the Cal Fire. Between Cal Fire and the and the high school there.
Excellent.
Thursday.
And it's the twenty-eighth. Yes, and it'll be the idea is to have it outside, you know, on the tarmac, on the tarmac, on the on the apron. So it won't be, you don't have to be inside a building or anything, but it is gonna be in person. There's not gonna be a Zoom Zoom or anything. There's been a lot of really positive feedback from businesses, as I've gone around and asked people to put up posters and talk to them about their concerns, and then just people on the street seem really interested. So the idea is to have a general information session with the different agencies, and we can, you know, contribute from the community what we know about the resources that are available, and then make clear that people, what we really need to do is make ourselves as individuals prepared for emergencies. And to that end, once a month, we'll be, the library has given us the the community room to have a meeting, and we'll have topic meetings. We don't have a date yet, but they'll be at the meeting, and so we'll be able to tell people at the meeting, and then we'll post it on public social media where when the meetings are, but we'll have the first one will be go bags. And, you know, how to put this together, how we can help each other actually do a go bag. So I think that's that's about it. Yeah. Oh, Fire Safe Mendocino will be there, and they'll be talking about their resources also. Oh, and our C M S, too. Our is gonna send somebody.
Thanks so much, Jennifer. I'm glad you're participating in that and getting that organized.
Yeah, thank you, Jennifer.
I'm gonna try and make that. All right, anyone else for privilege of the floor using the raised hand feature? Okay, not seeing any. We're gonna move on. We have the consent calendar as item seven. These are matters that are considered to be routine by the city and usually approved with one motion and second and a vote. If a member of the council wants to pull one of these items, they just state so, and we can discuss it separately. But if there are none, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented. Vice Mayor Berkey. And Vice and Councilmember Dobbins, seconds. If there's no discussion or questions from the public, we will go to a vote now, please, Paul.
Yeah, Councilmember Wasserman.
Yes.
Councilmember Kugel.
Yes.
Councilmember Dobbins.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Berkey.
Yes.
Mayor Ignacio.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
This takes us to item eight, reports and action items tonight, the main part of our meeting. Eight A will be the Arena Cove Recycling Center. I'd like to turn it over to staff for an introduction and report.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this regards the Arena Cove Recycling Center. We received word from Recology recently that they are considering closing the recycling facility due to ongoing issues with contamination, which renders much of the recycling collected unusable on the secondary market. Point Arena has provided a location for drop-off recycling for many years. Started as a successful operation that accepted bottles, cans, and cardboard. And over the years, the facility expanded, especially after haulers decided to move towards single-string recycling, which was theoretically supposed to encourage recycling and make it easier. When the city permitted Recology to take over the waste hauling contract from Pacific Coast Disposal in two thousand and seventeen, city was assured there would not be any changes in service, and a year later, Recology came back and requested that Solid Ways to Willetts be allowed to subcontract waste hauling, and again, the city was told there would be no degradation in service. Since that time, however, the recycling facility at Sea Ranch closed, which dramatically increased recycling drop-off in Point Arena. The Arena Cove facility has been allowed to fall into disrepair with most of the dumpsters broken and or unsightly. Recently, Recology requested the facility be closed altogether due to contamination of recycling. Closure of the facility would leave one regional recycling facility, the South Coast Transfer Station on Fish Rock Road, which itself has limited hours. The contract that Recology and SWO operate under requires pickup and processing of the recycling facility in Arena Cove. The Arena original contract we had with Pacific Coast Disposal states that they will assume responsibility for the transportation and processing for the recycling center. We'll provide the bins and collection schedule to maintain the necessary level of service for the center. With the Recology-Sonoma Transition Plan for Point Arena in two thousand and seventeen, they stated that Recology understands that Point Arena utilizes a recycle center, public depot, services will continue as previously provided, and Recology will partner with the city staff to ensure education and outreach promotes recycling and minimizes illegal dumping at the site. Your city manager myself does not recommend closing the recycling center and I believe that there's a mutual agreement that can be reached between the city and the hauler. Both Recology and SWO have presented two options for the recycling center, which was included in the staff report. And I'm going to turn it over now, unless you have any questions for me, to Jerry Ward of Solid Ways to Willetts and Fred Stummler of Recology.
If there's questions for Paul, use the raise hand feature now, or council, raise your hand. If not, Jerry, you wanna start us off?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, but I think Fred was gonna take the lead on this, but if I will, I'll follow up, though.
Okay, good evening, Fred. Good to see you again.
Hey, good evening. Is my audio coming through okay?
You sound great, sir.
Okay, thank you. Hey, so I appreciate the summary on the history here. The the reality that we're facing right now is the recycle center is turned into an unpermitted legal transfer station, so requirements state that any recycle center have ten percent or less than ten percent contamination facility. This site has been and continues to be well over that threshold just due to illegal contamination that is in the site. It it it's it's really a problem. It's the the product that is salvageable is essentially degraded to to more or less waste, depending on what kind of contaminants are in there. And I I understand the concern. I understand the history. I I think there are ways to mitigate the concerns about illegal dumping by essentially having a transition plan that protects the site from illegal dumpers and holding them accountable when it takes place. So I've done this in other communities where similar facilities have have closed. There's a transition period. It's usually short, and then people have the option to subscribe to service, both in Point Arena as well as the surrounding area. That will be where things transition to. So we we are recommending closure of this facility, but we're I I'm definitely here to listen as well and and understand what the priorities and concerns are here from either the public or anybody here with the city.
How about a question from Vice Mayor Berkey?
Yeah, Mr. Stummler, so when you say transition plan, do you mean that individuals who don't have trash and recycling service would get trash and recycling service, and you would service their homes?
Yeah, if they're if they're within city limits and they currently don't subscribe to service, we we absolutely start and stop service for anybody that 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 needs to. So, yeah, absolutely. I mean, the reality is, anybody who doesn't, anybody who doesn't have service currently and is using that center, it it they have to be, oh, well, I guess there is a a chance that they could be taking their recycling there and then driving their trash to the transportation, but the reality is that they're they're putting it all in the recycling center, which is why we have the contamination.
So you mentioned, or Paul mentioned, that since the Sea Ranch lost their recycling center, that that has increased the traffic at our center by by a lot. And so do you service Sonoma County as well? Do you service this Sea Ranch?
We do, and we worked with that community to close that center. I I'm not aware of an uptick. I I haven't done a volumetric study there. I'm not challenging the assumption or the statement that that it's increased there, but I I have not had issue in Sea Ranch. So all those homes have the option to subscribe to service, and we've seen those kind of adjustments take place.
Do you have any figures on how many people do have service within the city limits of Point Arena and within the city limits of Walala and the Sea Ranch?
I don't have Walala. I do have Sea Ranch and Point Arena, but I don't have that with me.
Okay, because that would be interesting to know, because I'm a big proponent of everybody having garbage service at their home, and I'd just like to know how many people actually do.
Yeah, Barbara, if I can jump in, I'd just like to remind the public that Recology does not service the Walala area. That's an SWO stat.
Yep. And we we don't service the the county area around Point Arena either, so Point Arena is kind of a an island for Recology. Jerry services around the surrounding area, so there is service options all around. I I do know from my historical research here, and I can get this current there. At my last look, there were a couple of businesses in town that did not have service that I was told are utilizing the recycle center as an alternative. And there are some homes, but at last check, I believe there was approximately eighty residents that were currently subscribed to service.
So I would address my question about Walala to Mr.
Jerry Ward.
Jerry Ward, yes. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Fred.
You're welcome.
So Barbara, do you want Jerry to answer or can Richie ask Fred a question?
Oh, we, we could wait until Jerry comes on and does this follow up.
Okay, Councilmember Wass. You're muted, sir.
Thank you. So I've been using and those three.
Speak up a little, speak up a little for us.
The three of us that live here on our property have been using the recy- center from it's worked at the pier about 20 years ago and at that time we were doing the, our original recycling and, and I've been familiar with the situation there in the intervening years. 10% of non-recyclable goods would consist of one complete full bin of those large bins out of 10. And in my experience, I have not seen an excess of that, although I won't, I don't mean to argue the assessment, but that it doesn't appear to be that bad. I know there has been an increase in garbage and non-recyclables there over the past few years and I regret that, we all do. But I think an addition of signage, significant signage, not just one sign saying, you know, please recycle, but instructions on how to recycle, what needs to be recycled, et cetera, which we once had down there a number of years ago would help a lot. Also, a closure at nighttime, I think, is probably a necessary move also. But I completely reject the necessity for eliminating our recycling there at the Cove. Thank you.
You, Richie. Jerry, or wait, actually, Mr. Ward, hold on just one moment. Councilmember Dobbins.
Um, I was wondering if, if, if it might be something that could help the situation because I have seen an up surge of not recyclable materials being put into the bins. I use the recycle center and I have for like Richie so many very many years. And I, I'm so grateful to have that service. And, but I wonder if, if there's a way to perhaps put some presence at the recycle center or maybe limit the hours of, of, of delivery or, or acceptance of materials and have someone there so that we could stop the unwanted garbage being dropped into the recycle. I, I just a thought of perhaps some presence of someone there.
Yeah.
Fred?
Well, that, that is, that is an alternative that we're willing to discuss. It, it, I can tell you from firsthand experience that it requires that vigilance and the restriction of that. You know, a couple of bad actors is all it takes to ruin the product that that's otherwise recoverable. You know, people come in there. So what I've seen historically is people come in there with paint cans, for instance, have used paint cans. And if, if the facility is, is closed, they're inaccessible, they can huck something like that over the fence and into the, into the material. Once something, product like that saturates fiber, it's all trash. And it gets, it's, it's one hypothetical example. There are ways to mitigate this, but but, but to, to limit, to limit access, essentially you, you have to look at security concerns. You have to look at oversight. Signage is, is a good thing. It's oftentimes ignored. This is, there are historically a collection of bad actors that, that will essentially offset all of the good efforts for a facility like this. And that's, that's why they are becoming less and less prevalent in communities. It's just the, the curbside collection is, is, is where things have evolved, where people would sign up for service. So anyways, I'm, I'm beating the same drum here, but um, I, I understand the, the connection to this and the history. If it does remain in place, I think it probably has to look at like something more like it originated, where there are a limited amount of materials that are accepted and there is oversight of that facility while those things are collected so that we don't find people clearing, clearing their waste with their recycling materials.
Thank you, Fred. It's pretty disturbing to look at the report that's in our packet. And you know, and I hear what Richie and Barbara and Anna are saying. But like Fred illustrated, it's, it's, you know, pizza grease on a cardboard box is a contaminated item and that cannot be recycled. And you see the examples that are in here and I'm sure these are not, I mean, these, these are less than a month ago. I think one of the things we should do is step up our security down there. I know we have the ability to do that. And maybe actually put in some equipment without too much expense that would pay off, that would actually capture the license plates of these offenders that are identified and, and we call out and get this to stop. Fred, are you, there's someone under the name of Jim A. that I'm gonna call next and he's gonna state his full name for me. Is this on this topic?
Yeah, I'm James Oceana. I'm a new resident in Pier Point Arena and I'll be teaching at the high school this fall. I'm very concerned about any kind of recycling that will happen near a body of water such as the Pacific Ocean. And I'm just a little alarmed that there's even anything down there. And certainly, you know, if Mr. Stummler could speak to what happens to, you know, any kind of contaminant? Does it leak through the concrete? Does it make its way into the water or the creek or, you know? How bad is the, the environmental damage that we can't see, but historically is probably there?
Fred?
So the containers there, we, if we are gonna continue using the facility down there, we have talked about container replacement because the corrosion that the containers are subject to from sitting up there is extreme with salt. Jerry has made a proposal to essentially replace them with plastic. Lids have to remain closed at all times so that water doesn't hit the material and then degrade the value of the material if there's contaminants in there, which are currently is in excess of 10%. Any water that passes through the containers and hits the ground is technically considered leachate. If there's any hazardous materials that make its way through and hit the ground, you know, any, any flooding that takes place in the areas, it, you know, that does occur periodically, at least in the five years I've been here, it's, it's come up a few times, you know, anything that hits the ground is subject to, to wash out. Any material that's, you know, hit by flooding, of course, is gonna be immediately, you know, worthless as far as a recoverable commodity. So yeah, it's, it's a, it is definitely a suboptimal location for the facility, even if it's operating as intended.
How about a follow up from Councilmember Dobbins? And actually, you know what? Mr. Ward's been very patient. We're gonna get to Councilmember Dobbins and Jennifer in a minute.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jerry Ward's Solid Ways to Willetts. We've been hauling now about a year and a half for, through a subcontract with Recology and, and have noticed a big increase in the amount of recyclables coming in. Maybe it's because of the Sea Ranch closure. But I think people from outside the city are using it more. And Barbara, I don't know the, the number of customers outside the city as opposed to not having service, but I'm sure there's quite a few. But I'd like to bring up a couple of points. Paul and my driver, road driver Joey Smith, have been looking at other locations for the implementation of moving the site to another location. We looked at a couple, but because of the coastal, coastal zone and all, it was, you know, very difficult. But one of the problems we've been having with the new paving and more boats at the pier, maneuvering the trucks to get in there to dump has been a little bit of a difficulty. And of course, as you know, the dumpsters don't roll too well, so forklifts have to bring them out. We hope that maybe the plastic dumpsters can, can rectify that a little better because they roll, will roll much easier, they're lighter and whatnot. So we certainly wanna move in that direction. But the other item is we operate nine drop off recycling centers in the county. And all of them are manned and all of them are closed during closed hours. So we don't get the contamination as much from, from those sites, various sites in Boomville, Albion, Casper, Westport, Potter Valley, Willetts, those, all those locations are all, are all manned. So I think we need to consider that in the future because we are getting more and more materials. We're not seeing it in the dumpsters when we dump. But when the material comes over to Willetts to get sorted, we're finding a lot more contamination because we have to sort all those recyclables by hand. We're finding needles, we're finding small pieces of metal, medication, that kind of stuff that is really concerning to my, my, my sort of sword operators. So you may not see them when you go in there because the dumpster may be half full or full, but it is, it is, it is a problem. So at our sites, we have somebody monitoring that material before it gets in. Do we collect? Do we, do we catch all of it? No. But we do minimize it by having somebody review what people dispose of for recycling and or their garbage. We do load checking as well. So those are our concerns. So we're looking at keeping it open. We certainly like to have some closure on it after hours. We will provide better dumpsters. But it'd be nice to have somebody that are monitoring the material as well as passing out educational material to the, to the public as to what hours they will be open and what materials we will collect. Plastics through, through seven, there's no market for it anymore. It's all garbage. We're willing to, to take maybe the number ones and number twos. But there just, just doesn't anything for all the other plastics. So if we can minimize those kinds of things, it would be a big, big help. So when you look at contamination, you're not just looking at garbage, you're looking at materials that are not recyclable or at least a market for them. So that to, to us is also contamination. Other than that, if we're gonna move forward, then I, I would suggest that we meet with an ad hoc committee or city manager and come back with a proposal of what we'd like to see. And, and, and I know we're not gonna be looking at another location because it's difficult, but try to maintain something down there where a truck doesn't have to wait to move boats and things to get in there on Monday morning. So. And again, I mean, where, is it the responsibility of the city of Point Arena to actually service all the county area too for a drop off? People can't take the same material to the Fish Rock Road Transfer Station, which we operate. And if they're bringing in appliances or oil or electronics, they can dump that at there as well for free of charge. So anyway, those are my concerns and issues and thank you for letting me discuss it. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. I'd like to go to Jennifer Smallwood and then we'll go to Councilmember Dobbins, Jennifer.
Okay, there I am. Okay, so so if you're gonna tell everybody in Point Arena that they're, well, tell, let's say it's only for the city, so recycling, let's pretend. Well, the alternative is to pay for trash pickup and then recycling is free, which does not seem like a fair trade to me. It's like now we have free recycling and I have an option to gather all the trash that I need and I can take it up to the dump when I need to. I, I barely have a, a five gallon bucket of trash every month. I don't wanna pay for trash pickup. I'm not required to, so I don't want to. And so I, I mean, it's not, I don't see how that, that works, that the city is gonna get rid of, well, at the city, the Recology people, the trash people are gonna get rid of our, our free recycling and then tell us, oh, you get free recycling at your house. But not really because you have to pay for trash to get free recycling at your house. So that doesn't seem like right. That doesn't seem fair to me for the people that don't have trash pickup or don't need it. And I would say anybody who lives by themselves or even two people can't fill up a trash can if you're recycling properly, you know, anyway. And then I didn't, I mean, I feel like I'm pretty educated and I didn't know the thing about plastics, one and two and seven and whatever numbers they are. I really think you gotta go all to, to education. We really need to educate everybody about what is acceptable. I mean, I didn't know if I put a plastic bag in that, it contaminates the recycling. I wouldn't do that if, you know, it meant that we weren't gonna get to have recycling at the Cove or at our house, whatever. So I think we really, I agree with the people that said, from the city council that said we need to have some, some real, some really, some education, which might even include actually sending flyers to everybody's house, saying, look, you know, whether they're a customer or not. It's like, here's a flyer and you can stick it in your, in your kitchen on your recycle bucket or whatever. And this is now, at this time, this is what can be recycled. And like the gentleman said, they're not gonna take the six, seven, eight, whatever number plastics anymore because they don't work. Well, you can't do that and then not tell anybody. I mean, how are people supposed to know that's a contamination? So, so I, I feel like a little bit jumping the gun and then what else? So yeah, we, we should do that. And yes, okay, I'm done. But that's, I mean, to me, this is really, this is for one thing for sure. I really, really, really feel strongly that if we're gonna take away that recycling because we're gonna, you know, you wanna be convinced that only people from Point Arena get to use that recycling and then we get to have free recycling at our house and we don't, we're not required to pick up trash, you're not, we're not required to have a trash pickup to do recycling at our house. If you're gonna take that away, there has to be a different way. We shouldn't have to drive all the way to Annapolis or Fish Rock or wherever to do trap, to do recycling if the city really wants to have recycling because all the mattresses that you see along the side of the road, oh my goodness, when you close that recycling, it's not, it's not gonna be pretty.
Mattresses are not recycled.
Yeah.
All right, let's, hold on, folks. Let's settle down. The only thing I'd like to comment first, you have a great position when you say educating the people. But you know, this recycle center was set up for the citizens of the city of Point Arena. Our, our ability to mail to those citizens' information is, is, we could do that, but part of the problem is, and we're trying to identify, is that we have actors from outside the area. I, we've said it in previous meetings. The capacity of recyclables that are showing up are down there exceed what Point Arena citizens generate. We need to figure out how to get through to those people, either by enforcement and or education. But I, I think Jennifer's on the right spot about, you know, and I didn't know it until Mr. Ward said that ones and twos is all we're looking at now. You know, I was, it's, there are publications on those of us that have service. They have pictures on the cans that say what numbers they do and don't take. And I, and I'm undereducated on what the difference between a six and a seven is, if those are the right numbers. But since Fred has his hand up, I'm gonna go to Fred now.
I thank you very much. I, I just, the, the, the the comment is actually a wonderful example of, of what we, we as the collectors have to contend with as far as assumptions that users make. And, and as far as, you know, blanket mailers for education, we, we cannot be expected to, to mail, to produce, distribute and educate people who aren't signed up for service. I mean, it, it, it costs money to do all of that. The trucks cost hundreds of thousands of dollars just to purchase, let alone operate and come 52 weeks a year. So while recycling is included in the cost of service as a component of it. I mean, it, it is a very costly service to provide and then, and then is to also take the burden on to educate everyone is to, to work through the assumptions. I, I see the same thing that Jerry does through the recycling where we, we have people put in hypodermic needles, like diabetic, diabetic, assuming that, oh, it's a plastic syringe and a metal needle. Both of those must be recycling. We have firearms come through the facility. I, I, I'm just, I'm baffled and horrified by what people assume is recyclable and, and aren't willing to take the time to educate themselves or go, go to any of the many countless websites that, that, that educate us what is and is not allowed in regular streams. So it, it, it is a, it is a burden that we're happy to take on with our customers. But for those that aren't our customers, it's, I, I, I don't even know where to start as far as educating people when the facility is open to all.
Fred, do you have a service? Fred, do you have a service um, or a model that? Like um, Jennifer was saying, there's a lot of single or single person households. That elect to go to like the uh, Fish Rock, uh, when, when the Fish Rock. Uh, facility, when they have enough of a load to justify going up there. Does Recology or S wild Jerry have a program that, uh, there's like a neighborhood? Uh, um, program where. You know, they can put all their trash in one area, it kinda sounds like our recycle center, but do you have any kind of programs for people on limited income?
I'd like to comment on that, um, here in uh, Meniscino County, the North County, as well as Anderson Valley where we collect. Uh, first of all, recycling isn't free, uh, it's built into the garbage rate because we didn't wanna start charging people. For recycling and then I just said, well, why am I giving you all this valuable material? And you're charging for it, so it isn't free, but what we have here. At our routes, and I'm not advocating this because I don't control the contract with Point Arena, but. We do have a recycling only charge, I think our rate in uh. City of Willets is eight dollars a month and they, we provide them a ninety-five gallon recycling cart that's picked up. Or we have uh, service where they can get a thirty-five gallon cart. Or a twenty gallon insert in their thirty-five gallon cart and have it picked up once a month. Or every other week, or they get a cart and they call us when it's full, when they know the area that we'll be in, so those people. Like Jennifer was talking about where they have a small bucket, they could just put it out there uh, every other week, once a month. Uh, whatever, that's the services we provide in the county. And in some cases, even the city of Willets, but we do have recycling only services for those people that just. Maybe have a business and they take their garbage to their business dumpster, but they wanna have recycling picked up at their home, we just charge. Uh, a minimal fee for, for that service, so that's something that could be adopted by the city. But that'd have to be approved by Recology, again, I'm not, I don't control, I'm not in the control of the contract.
Uh, we, Recology does have some contracts that are, I guess, from the Rattle Group with recycle only services, I, I can tell you they are. Uh, it, when, when we audit the service, either the driver will, will look at the lid, they're invariably as contaminants. Um, that are in there that, that show they're non-compliant. Very, very rarely I've seen one that can actually make that as a standalone service work without having something like Jerry said. Where they have a business in which they can take their, their waste actually someplace, even. Even a, a single person living in a home generates trash, it, it is inevitable, not everything is recyclable.
Okay, I think we're in all of agreement, before I go to Barbara on. Uh, I just wanna give uh, Councilmember Dawkins an opportunity, you've waited patiently.
Thank you, um, I just wanna reiterate that I think that monitoring the, the uh, facility. Would be a great um, uh. Help in uh, facilitating the, 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 the effectiveness of the. A recycling center. Uh, it, it, I mean, I, I maybe sounds simplistic, but. If people, if someone's there to monitor, then the bad actors who are contaminating will not show up. And I, I, I think that that's a relatively simple solution, I know it's a monetary thing that we'll have to. Our financial thing that we'll have to deal with, but I think that that's something that we need to address. On top, as well as, thank you Jennifer, the reiteration and the very, very, very important self-educating people. But I also think that having a monitor at the recycling center, unfortunately, I think is really necessary. And that my other thing, my other question was that was already addressed was, what, is there an alternative site if we don't have? Recycling at Point Arena, it down at the pier. Um, and it was addressed, so, so thank you very much for that.
Thank you, Councilmember Dawkins, Vice Mayor Burkey, a follow-up?
Um, yeah, I just wanted to uh, address Jennifer's concerns about just having a small amount of garbage and. Some recycling that she does um, every few weeks, and you know, I, I am a single person and I don't generate very much garbage either. But I lend my can to my neighbors and between me and two other neighbors, we fill the can every week. And they recycle in my recycling too, and um, that's a really nice way to um. Kind of uh, do your duty uh, as far as recycling and garbage service. And um, be able to uh, allow your neighbors to do it as well with no cost to them. Um, or they can chip in a couple bucks to me, I don't care, you know, but that's one thing that people could consider is kind of banding together and. Uh, sharing a can, and then the other point that I wanted to. Do is a question, and it's for Paul Anderson. Um, Paul, in the past, we've talked about manning the facility uh, unrestricted, on a restricted basis. And do we have any recycling grant money that could fund that position?
Well, so we receive a five thousand dollar grant annually from Cal Recycle, and in the past, we have used actually the most. Most if not all of that money on personnel, and that is a function of keeping the containers from overflowing, there was a lot of compaction that needed to be done, which. Presented other problems, uh, so there is some funding available for a position. Of someone that would just solely be doing that, but I don't know how far that would get you at five thousand dollars, we do also. Receive a six thousand dollar uh, franchise hauler tax fee. Um, a year from Recology as well, so if you utilize that as well, you'd have eleven thousand dollars a year. Just solely for recycling. Um, what I have discussed uh, this with peer staff and in the past. Um, excuse me. So, it's, it's difficult. Uh, because there are, I mean, frankly, there are people, probably most of the people that recycle there are from outside of the city of Point Arena. And that's a function of the fact that there aren't any recycling facilities on the South Coast except for the South Coast Transfer Station. And so people come here and uh, there has been quite a bit of abuse of the facility in the last year for sure. Um, of people, there's using it as their garbage. Depository, whether they know it's recycling there or not, they're using it that way. Um, and we have in the last two years, uh, the sheriff and the DA have prosecuted two. Uh, bad actors who knowingly dumped a voluminous amount of waste in our recycling facility and they were. Charged and fined and um, actually, one of them did community service for the city, uh, as kind of a penance, I guess, anyway. Um, I think there's other alternatives, I'll stop now, but I do have some uh, more comments I'd like to make. Um, about that, I, as far as personnel at the pier, I mean, we. Are open from seven to four every day at the pier, and so there is at least one person on staff present at that time. Uh, but there have obviously got other things to do than to just simply monitor the recycling facility, although when they see something, they do something.
Yeah, a follow-up question, Paul, um. Since this program was originated for the citizens of Point Arena. Ah, I can't believe this part, but um. Is there a way to go back to that and make sure that it's, I mean. You have to show residency or be a taxpaying citizen, I mean, is there a way to? Or does the city, does this council want to begin turning away those people that are not. Uh, eligible to recycle here, I would like to see it recycle for everybody successfully, let me put that out there, but. Until we get some more controls, like we're talking about. Uh, is there any other options you've given consideration to, to ensure that the people that are using that facility? Are appropriate to use that facility?
Well, that would entail having an employee sit there and request identification from everybody that comes to the Cove to. Recycle and would be probably turning away about eighty-five percent of the people because they're not residents. I understand, you know, that it was originally set up, I, I guess, I don't know the entire history of this, uh, it goes back farther than I've been here for sure. Um, but. Recycling, I'll just make this pitch, recycling is a huge uh. Issue with the state of California, they have imposed a lot of restrictions on haulers regarding recycling and it is. A positive benefit for the community, having a recycling center, and the question is. How's it being managed, and we have not managed it. Much at all in the last couple of years, it's kind of become a free-for-all there, and I think that is a big part of what's contributing to the problem that they're having. If we were able to tighten that up some, for example, restricted hours, maybe only, only open during the hours that. The pier is open. Um. Going back to the old way of do it, getting rid of the single stream recycling, which is frankly a disaster and it just has, always has been, there's just no way. For, that you can count on people to know that they need to clean out their can before they throw it in the recycling. So if we went back to the old way of we only take bottles, cans, number one plastics and cardboard. If you had dumpsters separated for each one of those, and. A lot of signage and education about, you put a lot of signs like paper only, cans only. That will prevent a lot of the misunderstanding that people have about what they can contribute to recycling. And it'll also make it easier to identify the bad actors who throw a trash bag full of stuff in there because there won't be any trash bags allowed because. It's supposed to be bottles, cans, cardboard and number one plastics only, so that, that would be my suggestion, I, you know, as far as. And see how that goes, do it on a trial run, see how it, you know, works out, if it does work out, great, we'll keep doing it, if it doesn't. Then we'll be having this discussion again, as far as looking for other locations, we have looked, we actually identified one location that would be. Perfect, unfortunately, it's zoned in such a way that it does not allow this type of facility, it would have to be rezoned, which is. A whole process with the Coastal Commission that would take some time to do, um, so we continue to look, but there's not. Much available land in the city of Point Arena that would allow that type of facility, thank you.
Um.
Anna.
Uh, have we addressed that, that, do we have a contract with? Uh, Recology or um, uh, any waste uh. Facility, waste collection facility regarding recycling that needs to be addressed and re- reassessed? Um, I, I kinda thought that we have that, and. I, I think we've kind of skirted that issue and I'm, I'm, I'm a little bit concerned about that. Maybe I'm just uh, misinformed or whatever, but, and if not, if we don't have any kind of contract with. Any um, service, then perhaps it's time to readdress the, the, the old way that we used to do. Um, that started the recycling center down at the pier, which is a volunteer organization. Or a volunteer group of people who did it, and maybe we can reestablish some or reincorporate that with. The, the service that we, we have that exists nowadays, I don't know.
Paul is, was, did you want a response from Paul or any of the presenters?
I'd see Jenny has her hand up, so I would let her. Go first and I'll have something to say.
Alright, Jenny.
California enacted a recycling law, I believe it was AB nine thirty-eight. It might be AB nine thirty-nine, my brain isn't working very well on the numbers. But it requires that a certain percentage of waste. That California's generate. Be recyclable, and so, that's become a very lucrative industry to the. The waste transfer people. I think Anna is correct, we probably have a contract with Recology and also with the hauler. And their responsibility is to make sure that they meet the minimums that California requires. I- in order to, to satisfy this, this law. And they're concerned, I'm quite sure, that we're not meeting it because there are bad actors out there that are dumping trash in. With their recycling, but at the end of the day, unfortunately, as a city, the city is responsible for meeting. Its responsibilities to reduce its trash by a certain amount. So, I, I think the city needs to be very concerned about where this is going.
Thank you for that, Jenny, Richie.
Yes, to, to use an overused phrase, uh, the elephant in the room here, I believe. Is the problem produced or as a result of other recycling centers. In the South Coast and Sea Ranch being closed down. It seems to me that, that the hauler and or Recology should um. Open those up again to alleviate the pressure here in Point Arena.
Exactly.
I. Uh, these, so nine thirty-nine is the correct uh, recycling uh, mandate and compost is followed by eighteen twenty-six. And thirteen eighty-three is the most recent iteration of those, these, these recycle centers predated curbside collection. For the most part, in the communities that I've seen, the, the service has evolved, so that. Those were created to allow an outlet for recyclable collection and processing and. As was described, they, they were originally intended to select very few materials and they've expanded as we moved to a single stream collection. I- it, it's evolved, and so. If there was no alternatives, I, I could absolutely um, get on board with what's being said, but, but. Both solid waste of Willets and Recology offer uh, services that include recycling. Um, and, and there are, while, while it's. You know, Jerry seems to offer uh, a, a recycle only service, but, but, but there is also a very low volume, low cost. Um, service that's available that allows for waste and recycling collection throughout the community. Um, and, and then again, what the, the real issue here and, and which see, people seem to be universally admitting. It is the case is that this is not a recycling center anymore, it is a garbage dump and, and that is illegal. And, and we agreed to, to collect this recycling center as part of the franchise agreement that is, you know, uh. Formalized and, and part of the, the franchise agreement, but, but this is no longer operating as a recycle center, it is a. It is a dump that people are utilizing it as an alternative to signing up for trash service and recycling service. If contamination was not an issue, this would not be on the agenda tonight, we, we would, we would be collecting, but, but Jerry's team is collecting it and taking it to the transfer station and. The loads are, 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 are no longer recyclable, they're, they're trashed. And I think there's pictures in the packet that, that substantiate that from recent loads.
Anna.
I have to go back to, we can, we can probably easily. Solve that contamination if we have monitoring at this, at the site. Uh, if people are coming in, know, people come in knowingly and dump their garbage, I mean, people don't. And not know that they're dumping their garbage. We, we have had, we've worked there for years without this kind of contamination, and now it's happening because people think they can do it. And if we have monitoring there, then that will alleviate that problem, I don't think there's a need to shut down the facility. Um, with the, if we put in place some uh, uh, restrictive hours. Or limited hours and some monitoring there, and I think that will eliminate a lot of the um. Abuse of the state, of the situation.
I agree with Councilmember Dawkins that we should at least try some of the ideas that Mr. Anderson has suggested. Um, I also believe uh, that uh, Tom White made a comment in the chat. Uh, supporting the separation of materials, that's something I think the city can work with, with the hauler. Uh, but I agree with Anna that we have to at least try rather than just see this service disappear, we need to give. Recology an opportunity, or we have to have the opportunity to disappoint. Uh, our haulers if we are not able to rectify this as a community and as a council. I'd like to go to William Morana, please.
Um, yes, so I, I just wanted to bring up too, well, like monitoring might get. Kind of expensive for the city if they were paying someone, and I would be kind of concerned that that would come out of like the peer budget, because it's usually a harbor master who would. Probably be there doing that monitoring, um, it might be more financially feasible to. Pay for the recycling service for low-income individuals or families, like having the city have a, a fund or something. Essentially do that instead of, instead of hiring. One to monitor the facility or setting up a bunch of infrastructure that would do that. Um, it might be worth just kind of running the numbers for people who would qualify in a low-income basis for. Like a city-funded recycle can at their house. like a city funded recycle can at their house. Uh, just an idea of like something that maybe would offset the costs in a, a more like beneficial way for the city.
Billy, I thank you for your, your input, but um, that, that I don't think you're suggesting that the city uh, taxes paid for the eighty five percent of the contamination or the, the ex- excess refuse that's coming in from out of the area. If you can follow up and just that's not what you're suggesting, right?
Definitely not. No, because I mean, I guess the concern was saying that there's a lot of individuals within the community and the recycle center is supposed to be for the for Point Arena and not for outside. Well, I've heard that a lot from recology. Um, and members of the, or like citizens of Point Arena. If they have a, an income situation where they can't afford a recycle can at their house for the pickup, the weekly pickup. Um, it might be cheaper for the city to pay the eight dollars for those people than to hire someone to monitor the site was what I was saying.
Thank you. Appreciate you clarifying that for us. Uh, Jenny Chandler. Uh, mute. Unmute, please. Unmute Jenny.
If you're picking up, if you're dumping trash and you can find two envelopes in the trash that have an address on them. You can report them to local law enforcement and local law enforcement can cite them for that and it's a misdemeanor. So it might be an option for the city to consider having a camera that captures license plates. And if you look, you know, if somebody goes through the trash and they find two envelopes with an address on it. You report them to the cops and they get cited. It's not perfect, but it's, it's a possibility.
That's a very novel idea about a license plate camera. Yep. Um, William, uh, Billy, are you still hands up? Okay. All right, um, we have support from the chat also. Olivia is out there suggesting that the same thing backing up what Paul was saying, that a restrict restricted daytime business hours makes sense. Uh, and uh, and it's more public when people are dropping off. That's actually a very good point, Olivia, that we didn't clearly identify. Is she saying those limited hours would expose those people to daylight hours of having to come out and do that. Um, unscrupulous activity, you know, with every, in plain daylight, not just sneaking around at night and doing it after hours. So that, thank you for uh, making that statement, Olivia. Uh, Councilmember Wasserman. I know you want to unmute. It's just right up there on the keyboard.
Thanks. Uh, I, I do want to go back to the original suggestion though of forming an ad hoc committee or some kind of committee to discuss these various proposals and to put some of them, if not all of them into effect. Thank you.
Okay, um, so noted.
Yeah, I agree with Richie.
Jerry Ward.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to make a couple of comments uh, regarding the uh, envelopes in the dumpster. I've tried that for fifty years and the cops tell me it has to be on the ground. And they can get them for littering, but if it's a public container, they can't cite them. So unfortunately that won't work. With regard to keeping the products separate, like Paul suggested, that's a good idea. I, I have the signage and everything. It's just going to re- probably require more dumpsters and I'm hoping that there's more room to allow that. But you need to understand that the public needs to understand that even though it's all separated, our trucks are coming in there and commingling it. Again, because it has to be hauled over to Willet's and then it'll be sorted. I can't pick up a four yard dumpster and just keep it separate all the way to Willet's. So it will get, I don't want people to get discouraged from separating the material as they watch our trucks dump it all into one load. So, but I think it's a good idea. Might mon- help educate the people as to what's uh, what's allowed uh, and what's not allowed. So uh, I think the ad hoc committee thing is a good idea and I think both Fred and I would be willing to work with a couple of council members as well as staff and maybe come back with a pretty good proposal for the, for the council to consider.
Thank you for that, Mr. Ward. Um, yeah, I, I, I think when Paul was making the uh, suggestion about the separated items, that was how it was originally set up. And we're just trying to get back to a basis where something was working. And uh, I think that all of these suggestions we've had here are really good. Um, even right down to the city trying to come up with some kind of funding, you'd be at grant funds to assist um, to get services uh, out in the community. That's always a good idea. Um, so council, do you have more or public, do you have more? Use the raise hand feature. I'll call on you. Uh, we're going to move forward on this. Council, what do you think of the idea of uh, having an ad hoc committee assigned to this? And as I asked that, careful when you raise your hand, it's like an auction. Who's going to be on that committee, please? I'm looking for volunteers. I have a volunteer from Councilmember Dobbins and Councilmember Wasserman. Is there any competition for those two seats? Not seeing any. I'm appointing Councilmember Dobbins and Councilmember Wasserman to an ad hoc committee on city uh, public recycling. Paul, you got that? Not? Yep. Okay. And uh, you, you two folks will uh, uh, council members, you understand the scope of what you're doing on this ad hoc committee. Clearly involved in participating in this meeting and uh, um, I look forward to you getting together and hearing back after talking with Mr. Stemler and Mr. Ward. And if anyone from the public would like to know when these folks are meeting or participate, please contact City Hall um, and uh, make arrangements with city staff there. They're happy to take your call. Eight, eight, two, two, one, two, two. Okay, uh, is there anything else we want to close on this? I'd like to hear from Councilmember Dobbins.
I, I want to thank you Scott for facilitating this meeting. It's a, it's an issue that I, I hold dear for our community. And I think it's very, very important for us to maintain the access and the ability to have um, this uh, service. And I, I'm, I'm looking forward to working with Richie and, and I think it's, I think we can work something out.
I, I wish you all very well and I also want to thank the public, not just the citizens of Point Arena, the public of our community that are also showing concern and willing to participate to make this back to a service that's beneficial for everyone. Um, Mr. Ward, um, until next time we see each other, probably at a LAFCO or an MCO meeting or LAFCO meeting. Uh, thanks for being here.
Thank you.
And yeah, I'd also like to just say thanks. We, we do want this to be a success, you know, recycling is a big part of our business. So we're, we're willing to give this a try. So um, I, I'll, I'll stay optimistic on it and I appreciate the subcommittee helping out um, and kind of partnering with us on this. So fingers crossed it works and thanks for the time tonight.
Gentlemen, don't give up on us. Let it, let us uh, work on this with you. Thank you.
All right, thanks.
We're moving on to item eight, be as employed, the local coastal program update. Can I get a introduction and a staff report from city?
Yeah, I want to graciously turn it over to Linda Roofing uh, for this report and discussion.
Good evening, Linda.
Thank you, Mayor Ignacio, members of the council. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. I'm Linda Roofing from North Coast Community Planning. Um, I met some of the folks on this Zoom at our community workshop on the Point Arena Housing Update Project last month. Um, we're going to try and keep our presentation short and to the point this evening as we know the council has other items on their agenda. Um, following ours, but that said, we have a lot of ground that we want to cover. So um, Paul, can you pull up our PowerPoint presentation and I'm just going to lead you through our slide deck. I'm joined tonight um, by George Williamson of Plan West Partners and Elias Henderson of Hummingbird Consulting. So let's see. Let's see, can you move to the next slide, Paul? Um, our team has been hired by the city to prepare a local coastal program amendment or an LCP amendment to encourage more housing in the city. A considerable amount of work was completed by the city when you updated your general plan housing element in twenty nineteen. The LCP amendment will address many of the actions identified in the housing element. And it will also address other housing related items that are necessary to respond to state housing laws that have been enacted over the past few years since your housing element was adopted. Next slide, please. So tonight's city council study session includes three main components. First, we'll provide a summary of the community input that's been received to date. We'll move straight from that into our recommendations regarding refinement of the scope of the housing update and George will lead you through that. Then we'll pause our presentation for council questions, public comments and council discussion. After that, Elias will provide an overview of the draft community and property owner surveys. And then we'll pause again for questions, comments and discussion. And then we'll wrap it up hopefully in an hour or less. Uh, next slide, please. So in terms of community input, the concerns we've heard over and over again are the need for more housing of all types. Um, affordability is a big concern, particularly in the rental market. There are concerns about displacement um, and of tenants and compliance with state housing laws. We've heard concerns about difficult permit procedures, not so much um, as a critique of the city's procedures, but more about conflicting information from county departments during the building permitting process and concerns about the coastal commission. We've heard about um, concerns about costs of development, about poor housing conditions, about the need um, for effective outreach to the Spanish speaking community um, as other themes. Next slide, please. Um, we've received a number of suggestions so far, including making it easier to convert single family residences to multifamily units. There's a desire to see more housing on in, infill lots and interest in seeing some of the vacant or partially vacant commercial buildings on Main Street uh, to be used for housing. There's definitely a widespread interest in accessory dwelling units or ADUs. There's an interest in cohousing, which is individual housing units with shared common spaces. Um, the two acre city owned property across from City Hall has been identified as a real opportunity site for housing. Uh, there's an interest in allowing for tiny, tiny homes. There's also an interest in allowing for class K and natural built housing. Um, the mapped buffer areas for the Point Arena Mountain Beaver are pretty extensive and they've been identified um, by a number of parties as a constraint on new development. We've heard a range of opinions on short term rentals. Some folks are happy with the city's current regulatory framework. Others want to eliminate the short term rentals or only allow them when a property owner resides on a property. Um, some have suggested that the city provide financial incentives to the owners of long term rental housing. And um, last but not least, the score group has suggested that a local rent control or rate rent stabilization measure might help address concerns about tenant displacement and escalating rents. So um, in summary, I want to remind you that there's a lot of community input that remains to be collected. And there will be lots of upcoming opportunities to chime in. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to George to talk about the scope of the housing update. Um, next slide, please.
Yeah, thank you, Linda. Um, yeah, just take you through this. We already touched on this, but accessory dwelling units and that includes uh, junior accessory dwelling units. And the distinction is that accessory dwelling units on a lot, it might be a unit over garage, um, freestanding unit in the back or side yard. But junior uh, ADUs are usually attract attached to the primary dwelling unit and typically a little smaller. So there are definitely some um, opportunities and options. And uh, this is getting a lot of interest um, throughout California and it um, the border that jurisdictions can encourage from private property owners with interested in doing that on their own, uh, that is private uh, supply housing. So that's a good thing, but uh, some guidelines and even some communities are um, putting up design and even building plan. So that's something we're going to take a look at. Transitional and supportive housing, that's uh, really for um, getting um, people experiencing uh, homelessness and, and with other disabilities back into um, housing and the rules now say that that has to be listed as a residential in the residential use, uh, conversion reg- regulations, that is the old housing stock. Um, for um, range of users and in multiple incomes and and household types. And then the reasonable, reasonable accommodation procedures. That's part of the uh, Fair Employee Housing Act and there's too much there to go into, but we're going to be explaining that uh, those accommodation procedures and applying them for um, what uh, for Point Arena's purposes. Inclusionary housing, uh, those are requirements rather than incentives. A lot of communities don't want that, but um, uh, there, so we're going to look first at incentive based um, housing rather than putting a percentage or an inclusionary requirement on. I think there's opportunity for success there. And then again, just compliance with the Employee Housing Act. Um, that act establishes requirements, fees, responsibilities for both operators and the agency. So we're going to make sure that uh, both operators in that area and um, um, and the agency itself understands what those responsibilities are. And then finally on this slide, um, this uh, low barrier navigation. And there's some uh, by rights supportive housing legislation for that. But essentially, it's, it's a housing first shelter focus um, provision moving, again, moving people experiencing homelessness, uh, helping them get uh, reestablished in, in households and uh, for to build up the, not only the um, supply, but also keeping people in those um, getting people in more permanent housing rather than transitional or even temporary. Um, so that takes us through this slide. Next slide. And then uh, for high priority, um, and having had the opportunity to work for the city on the housing element, uh, we feel we've already got a good head start on these priority items. Um, the housing element did uh, look at the Mar zone. We understand the extent and um, and then minimum density threshold. We're all used to maximum densities, but um, it's growing more and more important to have the minimum so that uh, a limited supply of multifamily residential isn't actually going to a lower density use. So minimums are really effective in that. Um, short term rental, uh, I understand there's a need for clarity there and so um, that uh, where ADUs uh, might be coming on, uh, we want to make sure that that um, is first and foremost for uh, Point Arena residents and uh, as much as we all love vacationers, uh, we have a obligation to help the permanent population first, I think. And uh, looking at that density bonuses, um, that's an incentive based program that uh, can really help um, lies more housing without um, that is uh, private development base without any, um, the city can put some bonus in and then have the um, have the development community kind of implement that. And then residential parking standards, um, we're seeing parking standards go down and that's freeze up land for other uses. And then the engagement process under this um, further Fair Housing Act requirement. There's a lot of opportunities to engage and from engagement comes understanding. And from understanding comes um, ability to act and those are all things that uh, we as the consultant team will be working hard to help the city um, put into play. Um, I think those are the two slides I'm going to cover. Um, I think those are the two slides I'm going to cover. Uh Linda, let me turn it back over to you.
Okay, um. Wait, so you uh around the next slide? No, can you move to the next slide, please?
Yeah, please. Um, so I covered the high priority item. So next slide will be medium low. Thank you.
Okay, so the medium and low priority items are items that we recommend a city do to comply with state housing laws, but we don't think that they actually um need to be included in this housing update. The div- but if we, but if we have additional funds available as we kind of close in on the end of this process, we can work with your staff to develop a methodology to estimate the affordability of unsubsidized housing units, which is something that's going to be required for the housing element annual progress reports in the future. And we can also help your staff develop training materials um for staff and for city council on the no net loss laws which address your site inventory in the housing element and the requirement there that there be no net loss and land available for affordable housing. And also um address the Housing Accountability Act. But what I will say is there's pretty good online resources for both of those. So um, next slide, please. Uh, we do have a couple of items that we think should be included in the scope uh based on your housing element programs. And and uh one of those is well, exploring the implementation of class K housing types is actually something that's more building code related than um LCP amendment related, but we can point your staff in the right direction for that. And then zoning for time tiny homes, if the council wants us to pursue that. Um, that should definitely be included in the LCP amendment. You also have a housing element program to allow live work spaces in single room occupancy units in the highway, commercial and commercial zoning districts. And um I, you know, by virtue of the fact that that's in the housing element, we can do that really pretty simply with this LCP amendment. Um, there's also a program in the housing element to allow multifamily housing in the highway, commercial without a use permit. If 20% of the units are affordable and then another program to say, consider expanding that to the commercial zoning district. This is one that we will come back to the council for more discussion of how to modify how highway commercial um zoning designations and to to really think about uh if you're going to require a percentage of units to be affordable, how to establish that at a level where it won't be a disincentive to um the actual development of affordable housing. Next slide, please. Um is similar to the last one. You have a program in your housing element that calls for uh potentially amending plan development regulations to require that 20% of the units be affordable and that at least one unit per development be available to um larger family households. And again, we're going to want to review those with the council and kind of think about the the whole plan development framework um and make sure that you're not establishing regulations that are going to disincentivize development. Um, allowing farm worker and employee caretaker housing in the agricultural exclusive and harbor commercial zones is another program that we can im- ease pretty readily implement um in the LCP amendment. Reducing residential parking to a minimum of one space per unit in all zones is in your housing element. It's also there's state housing laws addressing parking standards. So we're going to want to review that with the council. And similarly, there is a program in your housing element and there are some required new requirements in state law about manufactured housing. And so we're going to want to look at um allowing those in different zones. Next slide, please. So I want to point out a few other items that we've identified as priorities that aren't really coming out of state housing law or your housing element programs, but that we want to address in the housing update. First, we want to help the council coalesce on a vision for development of the city owned property that's across from City Hall adjacent to the Hillmer project. So um once you have an idea of what you want, we can contact affordable housing developers who operate in Mendocino County, gauge their level of interest, understand more kind of what their um minimal thresholds for involvement might be. And then with the LCP update, we'll modify the zoning to make sure that that's not an impediment to future development of that property. So secondly, we want to look at some of the other key housing opportunity sites in the city. Talk to the owners, find out what their plans are, what kinds of obstacles they've encountered it over the years. Um, and just, you know, really hear them out and try to see if there's things that we can do in this process to help encourage development of housing on these sites. And so what I've listed here are just some of the ones that have come to the forefront in our discussion so far. So have 140 acres east of town. That's the hay annexation area that um is all zoned for housing. Um, the school district has a property back behind their fields that's um has public facility zoning. I think that it's it's also um has been discussed as a residential a potential residential site. At the community workshop, we got a lot of comments and interest in seeing more residential units developed in some of the vacant downtown commercial buildings or second stories. Um, the seashell property I've heard, um, you know, that the the owner of that property has some interest in developing some workforce housing in conjunction with um reestablishment of the uh visitor serving uses on the property. And then I've also heard from Lena Bullemore and Jeff Giving about their property and kind of their travails and trying to develop it. So um i- if there are other properties you want us to add to this list, we'd be happy to reach out to the owners of those two. And then the last thing I wanted to mention is that the 26 unit arena village apartment complex is a super important component of Point Arena's housing stock. Every unit is rented as an affordable unit to an income qualified household. And I can't stress how important it is that that property be maintained. Um, because apparently there's some mold and other issues with the units and that the property be retained as affordable housing. So we will um help to develop a roadmap for the rehabilitation of those apartments and actions that the city can take to ensure their continued um long term affordability. So before we move to the next slide at the mayor's suggestion, because I talked to him this morning, I want to define the term affordable housing for you. It's actually a term that's defined by the federal government and in state law. And housing is considered afford affordable if it costs no more than 30% of the monthly household income. Um, and that includes payments for rent or your mortgage and for utilities. And so then the state defines levels of affordability for housing and we typically look at affordability for very low income, low income and moderate income households. And the income caps for these level or for for each of those levels is based on the county wide median income level and house household size. And so, for example, in Mendocino County in 2022, a family of four with household income of $40,150 qualifies as very low income. A family of four with an income of $64,000 qualifies as low income. And a family of four with an income of $96,000 qualifies as moderate income. And those are all levels of subsidized housing. Um, next slide, please. So this is actually um an opportunity to just uh stop and let the mayor uh kind of take over and manage questions, public comments, council discussion on the previous slides. And if you need us to back up the slide presentation um for reference, we're happy to do that, or at least Paul is managing this and I'll I'll try and help him hit the right slide. So with that, I'm going to just pause our presentation.
Thank you very much, Linda. Uh, that was a great presentation by you guys. Council, uh you've heard the presentation. This is your opportunity to chime in or uh ask questions of the presenters. Uh, are there any questions from the council at this time? Uh, Vice Mayor Berkey. Any done mute, please?
I have a question for Linda about tiny homes. Uh, whenever I hear tiny homes, I kind of freak out. But I don't really know uh what the definition of a tiny home is in regards to the discussion we're having tonight. Is it just a house with a small footprint that has a foundation or is it something less temporary? I mean, more temporary.
Yeah, so that is such a good question. Um, Councilmember Berkey. The uh, the city will need to, if the city decides to enact regulations around tiny tiny homes, it will need to define what a tiny home is. And there is no one accepted definition. Some communities have tiny home regulations that pertain only to mobile units that are on wheels. Others allow both mobile and um, you know, units on foundations. Typically tiny homes are less than 400 square feet. Um, usually there's a minimum size of, you know, maybe 100 or 150 square feet. Requirements as to what they include. I mean, obviously they include sleeping areas, um food preparation areas, sanitation facilities, you know, but but there's you know, if if you want to allow for really small homes or potentially really small mobile mounted homes, that's we'll have to discuss like kind of options for how extensive you are, you know, how expansive you want your definition to be. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, so basically it's indeterminate right now, and it's something that we have to determine as our discussions go on.
Right, and we can bring you some examples from other communities. A lot of communities are actually doing ordinances to try and regulate and allow for tiny tiny homes. So yeah, there's i- it's it's definitely a bigger discussion item to bring forward.
Just to follow up, uh, the council worked really hard on getting their ADUs. It took several years to get that straightened out. And then we thought we had it set up, we're ahead of the curve. And the state come in and said, nope, you're going to do it our way. So hopefully at some point along this process, we can get that at question answered because that comes up quite often in the community is what determines a tiny house versus an ATU and vice versa. Thank you for that, Linda. Uh, Councilmember Daubens, I thought I saw your hand, but no, no, she says no. Uh, any other council members at this point? Um, before we go to the public, that's okay with you, Linda. I'm going to read from the chat and from Olivia Ford. Is there an opportunity to adjust the low income affordable housing brackets to reflect the Point Arena city's median HHIs, I think is what it says, which is slightly less than $40,000 county median HHI household incomes. Um, is that something that the local government can determine or is that something that's pretty much set by legislature?
Right, it's it's set by the State Department of Housing and Community Development and they establish it each year based on the county wide median income. So there's really not an opportunity to like locally adjust your affordability ca- categories. But you can certainly target, I I mean, with affordable housing projects, you can target what level you want to hit.
Well, she makes an excellent point. I mean, there's only four municipalities in the county and uh in this county. And I would strive to say that the household median in Point Arena may not necessarily match that of Ucaya. So do some of the, do munis- do uh municipalities have any kind of uh understanding or do they just get blended in with the county like you were suggesting?
They get blended in. It's the enti- it's county wide. It's the entire population.
All right, thank you for that. Uh, it's at this time, if I don't see any hand raising from staff or the uh council, I'm going to open it up to the public. If anyone has any questions, please use the raise hand feature. If you happen to be on the phone, use the star nine feature to let us know that you'd like to speak. When called upon, we'll be asking for your name and we would appreciate having your uh resident address uh for the audible record. Is there anyone that would like to uh ask questions or comment to this? And I would again like to appreciate Olivia Ford for using the chat feature. So I can read that correctly. Okay, Linda, we're going to turn it back over to you. I'm not getting uh anything right now. We may have something over on the second half of this presentation. Would you like to continue?
That's excellent. We would be happy to continue. And so what we're going to take from that is that the council has pretty much is in agreement with what we've listed as are the priority items that we'll be addressing. We're not taking any of this off of the table. And when we come back to you, um, that will probably, it's well, I'll talk a little more about kind of the next steps towards at the end of this and the wrap up. But there, we will come back to you um in a couple of months for a much more extensive study session.
Okay, Linda, just to make sure, uh, this is just a an opportunity for any council member to say, I don't want to go forward with this, but I've been leading um leading on with Linda that the council is in consensus to go forward. So please, if you'd like to tell me I'm wrong, council, this is your opportunity using the raise hand feature. Linda, I think this council's in consensus.
That's great. Thank you. Um, so Paul, can you share this slideshow again, starting on um where are we? Let's see, the slide 13, community and property owner surveys. And I'm going to turn it over to Elias Henderson. Um, who is heading up the survey effort and Eli can introduce himself and talk us through these slides.
All right. Hi, everyone. My name is Elias Henderson. I'm with Hummingbird Consulting and I'm working as a consultant with the city of Point Arena and North Coast Community Planning on several aspects of this uh of this project, including the community and property owner surveys. So I'm happy to be here and let's jump in. Um, I do want to flag that we'll have a question and comment period at the end. And um, and we'll go, we'll start with this overview. So first I want to mention that there will be two separate surveys, uh first a community survey and second a property owner survey. Uh, the reason we've divided it this way is that one of these surveys is going to be focused on housing needs and the other on development potential. Uh, so in economic speak, you can think about this as housing demand versus supply. And we'll talk a little bit more later about the the distinctions between the two surveys. Um, so our intent in doing this process is really to understand the priorities and concerns of the community and to ensure that voices are being heard from across the spectrum of the community. The survey instrument that we'll be using is Survey Monkey. Uh, this is an industry standard, but there are a couple of specific reasons why we're using it instead of one of its competitors. Um, one, it's it has sort of unlimited options for designing different questions and designing our survey. It also has powerful tools for analyzing on the backend as we move from the survey. You know, from gathering responses to reporting on those responses. And finally, it offers a powerful method of duplicate protection. The community survey will be anonymous. Uh, but we do want to ensure protection against survey vandalism, which we don't expect, but we want to be ready for. And Survey Monkey has tools for that without getting too technical. Um, so let's talk briefly about the types of questions that will be included in this survey. Uh, most of the questions fall into one of two big buckets. First demographic questions. Second, housing questions. Um, there will be a number of multiple choice questions. And then a decent portion of the survey will be what are called Likert scale questions. So those are generally five options. I'm sure you've all seen them before. Um, strongly agree, somewhat agree, neutral, somewhat disagree, strongly disagree. The reason we use questions like this is to allow respondents to indicate the extent to which they agree or disagree with the given statement or to express a neutral response. So as opposed to strict binary questions, this gives respondents the ability to express the strength of their preference or neutrality. Um, there will also be a couple of open ended comment box questions, just to elicit general commentary or concerns from the community. And the goal of both surveys is to take no And the goal of both surveys is to take no more than 10 minutes to complete. We want them to be accessible, straightforward, to the point, and avoid overly technical language. And so, so those are some of our design goals. And then let's touch on the timeline here. So we'll be rolling out the surveys in around the middle of August. So that'll give us time after this meeting to incorporate any feedback that we get and/or revisions, and also for us to code this into Survey Monkey, into the survey platform itself. In terms of reporting, we're hoping to report our initial findings at the October Community Workshop, Housing Community Workshop, and then to have a final report prepared at the November City Council meeting. That said, I want to include the caveat that we may extend that timeline. And if survey responses are particularly slow to trickle in, in working with some other partners in the community, we have received the feedback that it can be hard to get people to respond to surveys. So we're preparing for a full core press in terms of distribution, which I guess queues us up for the next slide. So let's talk a little bit about distribution in the comments. Someone mentioning English and Spanish versions, and we do plan to have this professionally translated into Spanish in addition to the English language version. That's important for a lot of reasons, accessibility at the forefront. In terms of getting the word out, like I said, I use the word full core press. I meant that we want to make sure that we're getting this in front of as many people as possible, including people who maybe aren't attending city council meetings or community workshops, or aren't on the city's email list. So of course, that does mean emailing, that means social media, that means physical mail, that means posting survey in brick and mortar places. And that also means working with our community partners. So right now, we've been working and talking with the Action Network and Noma Health Alliance and SCORE. And these partners will help us reach out to communities within our community through their connection with schools, with tribes, with the Spanish language community, and as I said, other people who aren't as plugged into the city's normal communication networks. I do want to mention two things here. We are planning to host a in-person listening session with, or in partnership with Action Network as a means of connecting with some people who might not even have internet connections. And my, my, require more of a personal touch, and we, we are hoping to have a translator available at that session. I also want to flag that we will be accepting responses from people within the city and the surrounding area. Given the tools at our disposal, it's infeasible not to do this. Anyone can log on online and fill out the survey. But we're asking a host, or a smattering of demographic questions, and one of those is where are you from? And, and so that will help us differentiate between responses we're getting from people who live within Point Arena, people who are in the service area of Point Arena, and further beyond. Okay, I think we're ready for the next slide. Yeah, so the draft survey questions went out with the council packet. Hopefully, you guys have had a chance to review those, and if you haven't, please review them, and we'll have a comment period where you can get to us after this meeting. And so I want to talk quickly about these three different buckets. First, demographic questions. So this will supply us with some standard information, and that becomes really useful when we get into the reporting stage of this, because it allows us to slice up the data in interesting ways and helps us understand who, demographically speaking, wants what when it comes to housing policy and development interest. And so one example of a question we'll be able to answer, because we're taking demographic data is something along the lines of what percentage of seniors feel like there's a lack of senior housing? What percentage of non seniors feel like there's a lack of senior housing? And so here, we can start to get at some of the key cleavages in community interest, and we can understand some of those things as we move forward to crafting policy that works for everyone. And, excuse me. Okay, the community survey questions or housing questions, these are directed towards helping us understand the needs and priorities of different segments of the community and taking the temperature of that community on a wide array of housing issues, as well as potential solutions. And the property owner's survey is similar, but it's oriented more towards potential interest in development and existing and or perceived barriers to development. So hopefully, that gives you an idea of the buckets of questions we'll be asking and helps differentiate a little bit between the purpose of the two surveys. So with that, I think we can move to our final slide. Again, as I said before, if you have questions after this meeting, feel free to email us. But please get those emails to us by August 5th, and send those emails to linda@nccplanning.com, as in North Coast Community Planning. So linda@nccplanning.com, no later than August 5th. And I guess we can, we can open this up to questions, comments, and suggestions.
Okay. Thank you for that presentation, and we'll go to Vice Mayor Berkey, please.
Yeah, Elias, thank you for that. I just wanted to point out that in the survey, in some of the questions, like number 17, it refers to highway commercial parcels. And I don't think the normal Point Arena resident knows what that means. And it might be a, a good idea to put in a map that shows the different parcels in Point Arena with the different designations and kind of explains what that means. What is highway commercial? What is ag land? What is residential? What is high density residential? You know, just to kind of educate people a little bit about the questions that they need to answer. That's my only comment.
That's an excellent comment, and I think Elias, doesn't Survey Monkey have a map feature that you can put a pin on where you live in town?
And Scott, that's something that we can definitely look into. To respond to the idea of including a map in the survey itself, I think it's a great idea, and it's something we'll consider. The basic tension in including educational elements along with the survey response gathering is adding time to, to complete the survey, and we do want to keep this thing to a tight 10 minutes. But Barbara, I think that's a great idea. I do want to flag one other important note about a survey like this, which is we want to limit the number of required response questions, so that if people feel uncomfortable answering a question, they can skip it and move on and, and submit the survey within the timeframe that they have, but that's a great.
Along with that, you also want to give them the opportunity to answer correctly, like the Vice Mayor says. If a lot of people don't understand the difference, especially in the acronyms we use, we know what MR is, we know what HC is versus HWC. AE, not a lot of people get that. So, you know, we want to make sure that your survey is as accurate as possible. So if we can include more information, that'd be helpful. There's one other thing that Elias, I think you can answer. It's in the chat, it's, and I thought, I thought you might have covered, but let's just make sure. Will the survey be provided in print and in physical, in the physical mail? Is that available? From you guys to, if people need mailings, they can get a physical copy of the, of the survey to fill out and then turn back in to City Hall or somewhere to your choosing.
Yeah, absolutely. So we'll have the, the version that exists online, which is accessible that way, and then we'll have physical copies. And those will be available at City Hall, but we'll also be distributing them. So right now, our plans, we have a couple of different methods we're exploring as far as distributing physical copies themselves. And one thing that we're considering is stuffing mailboxes.
Okay, excellent. Any other questions from the council or Vice Member?
Also, I think that many people may not be familiar with what an ADU is and auxiliary dwelling unit. It, it's kind of a code word, you know, that we know what it means, but I don't think everybody else does. So we might want to include some kind of clarification or glossary, something like that.
Glossary would be really good. That's a great suggestion. Any other comments about Councilmember Dobbins? I need you to unmute, Anna, please.
I'd like to reiterate Barbara's comment, that acronyms are something that not everybody is familiar with, and it's, I think it's essential to have a glossary of acronyms, because they're repeated and they're, you know, sometimes they're, they're, they're the same acronyms used in other agencies that don't relate to what we're talking about. So I think it's important to have that clarified in any, anything that we're working with.
Great, thank you, Anna. And speaking of acronyms, Olivia, I know you're listening. Can you just put in the chat for me, and I'll read it out loud, what SCORE stands for? You told me before, I think it's South Coast, something, I don't want to get it wrong. Can you, can you just type that out for me? And while I go to someone else, is there anyone else from the public now that would like to use the raise hand feature to talk to the presenters or to the council? Okay, well, Linda, Elias, William? Thank you, is, oh, George, I'm sorry, I saw Williamson. Thank you, George. Sorry about that.
We, Scott, Mayor Ignacio, we actually have just two more slides, so it's got a little bit of a wrap up, but thank you so much for your feedback on the survey, and we will definitely incorporate it and address the comments that we got tonight. And again, if anyone, you know, wants to spend a little more time with the survey and has any questions or comments, just send me an email. We're going to kind of close off the comment period a week from Friday, so we can wrap it up and get it out on the streets.
So, thank you, Linda, and just to follow up, Olivia did send to me, SCORE stands for South Coast Organizing for Radical Equality, and there's more information about their organization on their SCORE Facebook page. Thank you, Linda.
Okay, so Paul, can you put up the presentation, starting with slide 17? Okay, so I just wanted to talk for just a minute about next steps. So in the coming couple of months, we're not going to be coming back to the council. We're going to be hard at work. We're going to be continuing our interviews with key stakeholders, initiating consultations with the tribes, with the Coastal Commission, with the other agencies, kind of getting that kind of input into this project. And now that we received your input tonight, I think we can present to them kind of what the scope of our undertaking is, and so that we can get targeted feedback. We're also going to be administering the community survey and the property owner survey. And perhaps most importantly, we'll begin drafting the ordinance amendments for you. And so we'll be coming back to, with community workshop in October, probably the third Tuesday in October. And we'll provide the preliminary survey results at that time, and then we'll be, you know, anything else that's kind of coming up in our work that seems interesting and that we'd like some community input on, will be on that agenda as well. And then in November, we want to have a study session with the council, and we might request that you have a special meeting if, rather than combining it with a regular meeting, because I think we'll have a lot of items that we're going to want direction from you on, because by that point, we'll have started to really lay out the ordinance amendments, and there's lots of alternatives and options and stuff that we're going to need some input from you on. And we'll also have received feedback from some of the agencies that will influence kind of the direction that we go. So that's kind of the, the road, the path that lies ahead. You know, we're still on track and aiming to submit a local coastal program amendment to the Coastal Commission next spring, and their process takes a year. So we're looking at 2024 to actually wrap up this whole process. So thank you so much for your time this evening, and we look forward to reporting back to you in coming months.
Well, wonderful. Thank you for that. I know we have our calendar already pretty much preset for the year, but I'm sure working with the city manager, you know, and coordinating with city staff, we can look at the possibility of an additional meeting. And I see why, you know, based on this presentation, the introduction, very informative. I want to applaud not only your team, but the public and the council for participating in this process. It's, it's encouraging to see that we can work together, not only as a city, but as a community, to move this topic forward. Is there any parting words for the presenters from the council at this point, or from the public? Folks, I want to thank you very, oh, Vice Mayor Berkey has a few things to say.
Oh, yeah, I just wanted to point out that the presentation that Linda gave was really great, but if you read our agenda packet, there's a ton more information. And I wanted to just point out that in Attachment B, page four, there are some links posted in, in the packet, and one of them especially is really, really exciting and amazing. And it's an article about how Crested Butte, Colorado approached their housing crisis, and it's an excerpt from Outside Magazine. And if you have a chance to read it, everyone, council, public, read it, because it's really amazing, and it'll give you hope. We all need that. Thank you.
All right, again, thank you, Linda, to you and your team, and we look forward to seeing you in the upcoming meetings.
Thank you again. Good night.
Good night. All right, moving on to 8C, Announcement of City Council Elections. Introduction and Report from City Manager Paul Andrews.
Yes, well, as you know, the, there will be an election this November. It's a nationwide election, but the city council of Point Arena will be on the ballot. The county administino will administer the election for us. So that, this time, there are three seats that will be voted on. Currently, the seats held by Vice Mayor Berkey and Councilmembers Dobbins and Wasserman. We have released the, sorry. We have released the elections packet, so anyone interested in running for city council, you need to live in the city limits, be a registered voter in the city limits, and be 18 years of age. The requirements are to collect no less than five signatures from registered voters within the city limits and file any financial reports with the Fair Political Practices Commission. So I wanted to bring that to your attention as far as announcing it. And then I also wanted, I included in the agenda packet, and I would like to point out a few things about being a council member and what that means, because everybody may not understand what the city council does besides come to meetings. There's actually quite a bit more, so I want to just go over a few of those things so that people have an understanding who may want to run for city council. The main thing, things are, so the, all cities in California are granted powers under the Constitution. We are in a general law city, and what that means is we basically abide by the laws that the state of California have created in the Constitution for local jurisdictions, such as ours. We operate under a city council manager form of government, which means that the city council is elected by the people. They are responsible for ordinances, appropriations, budgets, developing an overall vision of the city. Our council is comprised of five members. They serve four-year terms, staggered. And the mayor in our city is selected by the members of the city council. The council then appoints the city manager administrator to oversee the daily operations of the government and implement their policies. City manager serves for the governing body and with an employment agreement or contract. Ideally, the manager is apolitical, and they're only supposed to be looking at what happens in the city from the lens of what's best for the public, not what's the best for the political wins, I guess you would say. As a note, most of its existence, the city operated under a commissioner form of government, which meant that each council member was a commissioner and were assigned executive responsibilities for certain aspects of municipal affairs. There was a public works commissioner, there was a peer commissioner, there was a wastewater commissioner, et cetera. And they, they handled There was a wastewater commissioner, et cetera. And they, they handled implementing policies and coming up with policies for those departments. And the administrator would implement those and handle the day-to-day affairs. So it was basically a situation where the city council sat as both the legislature and the executive. And that's happened to create problems in the past. And most local forms of government have abandoned that because there are, you know, issues with favoritism, appearances of favoritism for different members of the community based on personal preferences as opposed to what's good for the entire community. So the council manager former government was abandoned in the early 2010s in Point Arena and now have a council manager former government. Some of the things the city council do on a regular basis, they review and approve the annual budget of the city, establish long and short-term objectives. They establish tax rates, enter into legal contracts, pass ordinances and resolutions, regulate the land use of the city through zoning laws, regulate business activity through licensing and regulations, communicate policies and programs to residents, and respond to constituent needs and complaints. They also represent our community and other, other levels of government. In addition to the city council, many of the council members serve on various boards and commissions, including Mendocino Council of Governments, which handles transportation funding, the Economic Development and Financing Corporation that Vice Mayor Berkey mentioned earlier, Local Agency Formation Commission, the Mendocino Transportation Authority, the League of California Cities, and occasionally on Snow McLean Power. And then additionally, council members can also serve, as we saw earlier, on two-person ad hoc committees to research and address particular issues and report back to the full council. All meetings are open to the public and citizens are encouraged to attend. The meetings happen at fourth Tuesday of the month at six PM, generally at City Hall currently online. We are maybe special meetings called, such as we talked about a little earlier. And that's about all I wanted to point out. So people have a little more understanding about what the city council does. And what I would do now is I would turn it over to the city council members themselves. And maybe they have some pointers or things that they enjoy about the job, things they don't enjoy about the job, whatever you want to discuss. So thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Vice Mayor Berkey.
Yeah, one of the questions that I get most frequently is how much time does it take to fill your role as a city council member? And I've got to say, it really varies. Some people spend very little time on council member work. Other people spend a lot. I tend to spend a lot because I sit on a lot of different boards and also committees. So I would say that I spend at least an hour a day, maybe not on Sundays, doing council work, reading, researching, having meetings, things like that. And so, you know, it, it really is your comfort level, how involved do you want to be? How much time do you have to devote to the position? But it could be as little as an hour a week or as much as five hours a week. I'm sure Mayor Ignacio has a different take on it, but that's my response to that question. You can be a very involved council member, or you can be a less involved council member. But you do have to do your homework and be ready for meetings. And I think that's the most important aspect of the, of the position.
I think Vice Mayor Berkey is being pretty modest about the amount of time she puts in. I mean, she's been championing, I mean, she chose to, but she's excellent at helping getting special projects going, like our Fourth of July event. And other council members participate too. But I mean, she organized that. Barbara, I'd be amazed if you got that done at only five hours a month or five hours even a week. I myself, I, I sit on the LAFCO that Paul mentioned, the locally seat formation commission. And other council members have sat on similar boards in the past. I'm on the council of mayors, which there's only four of us in the county. And we make decisions for other commissions within the county, like air transportation, railroad. There's a number of different projects that we have to decide on. Fortunately, that's only a couple of times a year. The Mendocino Council of Governments happens, a lot of these meetings will happen sequentially in the same day. So if you have time to put in a few hours a month working on this, it works out really well. I get the same question Barbara gets. And that was a pretty good round number of say, five hours a week. And then there'll be some weeks you won't have a whole lot. Then there's weeks when, you know, we're coming up to a deadline for something and a little more may be required of you. I spend at least my Sunday nights with the, the agenda we get and go through that. And I get to work with the city manager and city staff to make sure everybody's gets their payrolls checked signed. And a number of things are discussed and clarified. It's, it's very rewarding knowing that you can be here and, and contribute to your community. And I choose to be very apolitical as a mayor because my belief is I don't just represent the registered voters of Point Arena. I represent the people that own property here, but don't live here. I represent business owners that maybe operate here, but don't live here. And I represent those people that come into my community, not only to work, but to spend time down at the pier, you know, at the parks or whatnot. I'm, I might, I try to be open to everybody. And I hope whoever would be interested in this position will take a similar stance. So it's, it's rewarding. It can be trying at times, but it's, it's not a stopper. I'm glad to be here. Anyone else from council, like the council member Wasserman?
Yeah, um, yeah, you, both of you put in a tremendous amount of time as much or more than any council member I've ever been able to observe. I myself put in, I would say, much less time on average. Maybe I would call it one to four hours a week, sometimes no hours a week. Although one has to include the time you spend on the street, talking to citizens, observing what's going on in the town. One of the things that's so rewarding about being a council member in Point Arena is that we're small enough to be able to really feel like we're touching on every part of the town, or at least as much as possible. We, we can talk to people at the post office. We can answer questions. It would be disingenuous for me to say that I'm agree with everyone and listen equally. I try to, but we're only human. I do my best at that kind of thing though. And perhaps learn how to be more even-handed as time goes on. So that's my tip.
Thank you, Richie. That was great. There was a little technical glitch in the background. It appears that we've lost Vice Mayor Berkey. So we'll give her an opportunity to reconnect. But is there any other council member that would like to speak up about their experience? As a council member, I would love to hear from Ann Dobbins when she unmutes her mic and tells us what she has to say.
I would thank you for the opportunity. I want to thank the city of Point Arena for the opportunity to serve on the council. It's a very rewarding experience because it's an opportunity to serve our, our community and to serve our, our, our country. For ex, I mean, I don't think there's any place else other than a small community like we have where we can have so much effect on our local government. We have a voice. And our voice is very loud in the city of Point Arena because there's only five of us on council. And, and when we, we, we enact what we believe in and we listen to our, our community and we're able to serve and actually make policy for what is happening in our community. And it's a privilege and it's, and it's a responsibility. And I think that anybody who would want to be on this should be so happy to be encouraged. I would happily encourage everybody and anybody to do it because it's very rewarding and sometimes very difficult. But it is rewarding in the sense that you, you get to be active in your government and in your world. And I just feel privileged to be here. Thank you. And I hope that anybody else would step up for that as well.
So let's put Jim on the spot.
Yeah, thank you, Scott.
Well, you brought me in here, Jim. I mean,
Yes, well, as everyone is saying, you can, you can be as involved or minimally involved as, as with your life and lifestyle. But no, I, I think it's, it's a brilliant thing for people to engage with the city as, as much as they're comfortable. And it's, it's certainly, certainly something that's needed. So I'd encourage anyone to make themselves available and do what you feel like doing to help the city out. That's, that's all.
Thank you, Jim.
Yes.
For a group of five people that established early on, and when new members come on, we all respectfully agree to disagree with each other. So we can have a vote that doesn't meet up to everybody's yea or nay. But I mean, I've, I've been the one dissenting vote and have lost. And I respect that process and I respect these folks that sit up here on this dais with me. So, you know, come on out and, and, you know, find out more information. Talk to the city manager. Get up here and, and be a part of this process that we're all a part of. We welcome you and we encourage you to participate. Paul, is there anything else on this topic you'd like to cover? And he says no. So thank you. Oh, well, you know what? Let's see if the public has any questions. Do you have any questions or comments? Please use the raise hand feature. We'd love to hear from you. And I didn't read the chat, so I'm going to read this off the top of my head. Olivia says, I'd like to emphasize that being on the council is really lighter lift than it seems. And it is an opportunity to better understand just how you can support the community and direct, in a direct and tangible way, and then take direction, direct action on it. Olivia Ford was a great participant for the council while she was here over the last term. And we, we were sorry to go, but you can tell she still stays active in the community. And we appreciate her input. So thank you, Olivia. Any other comments from the public before we move on with the agenda? Well, thank you, and I look forward to seeing new names on the ballot as well as our existing names on the ballot. So item nine, informational items, Cal Cities' top bills and key budget negotiations for cities in, to watch in August. That's a mouthful, Paul.
Yeah, that is just a summary of what the legislature is looking at doing that affects cities in the coming two months. And you'll see in there, there are a number of housing-related bills that are actually limit what cities can do and, and establish some requirements that may not be appropriate in the coastal zone or for our community. They tend to look at it as a one-size-fits-all and urban centers dominate. And so some of the legislation that comes out of the legislature is geared more toward urban areas, but it affects us too. So just wanted you to be aware, League of Cities will, as you know, I believe, send out action alerts to you all. And if there are particular topics that you want to respond to, you are free to do so.
And Paul, thank you for that. I got a question for you. And just clarify for me. My, my packet came with a, a nine B letter from, yeah, that was.
Oh, yeah, it came with the flap. We just leave those in there.
I know there's a second, there's a letter from Building a Better America. Or is that the same as the League of California Cities? I'm not, you know what? Let's not worry about it. If it's something else, well, then that moves on to reports from you, sir. And or if the city attorney would like to go first tonight, we would enjoy that, please.
I'm really quick. I have nothing major to report. I've been working really well with Paul and we're working on documents between the county and the city. And we hope to be moving those along.
Excellent. Glad you're here tonight. Paul?
Uh, I don't have much to report. You know, we are doing Harbor Fest. We'll be looking for help with that. We are hopefully in the middle of August installing the nine pilings and the steel guide piling at the Point Arena Pier. We've been working on that for quite some time, getting the contractor lined up to do that. So we will hopefully by, you know, early fall, have that project completed. We toured, I toured the boathouse building with Billy Arana, Jennifer Smallwood, and Lisa, I'm forgetting her last name, from the State Coastal Conservancy. She was sent to look at the building and assess whether it's something that the Coastal Conservancy would be interested in participating with the appraisal for, like we talked about at the last meeting. And my impression from her was that she was very enthusiastic about the building and was going to report back to her superiors who sent, sent her here to look at it, that she was a yes vote on moving forward with the appraisal and possible eventual purchase of the building. So that was very positive. And the final thing I'll say is that Jenny and I did meet with Sheriff Kendall and Under Sheriff Brewster about the sheriff's contract, which expires this year. And we had a good discussion. We'll be bringing that to you at a future council meeting. And that's all I have to report.
Thank you so much for that. Item, item eleven, future agenda items. Just like to report that our next scheduled council meeting is on August twenty-third. It'll be at six PM right here on this same bat channel. At the, over the next forty-five days, we should be getting a veterans building study update. And downtown park improvement project coastal development permit will also be an item to cover. At this point in the evening, we'll move on to item twelve, which is a closed session. And we are going to be having a closed session, a conference with real property negotiations. And when we come out of that closed session, the council will come back in here and report out on those, that closed session, and then we'll move to adjournment. If anybody has questions for the council, now is your last chance to get them for the evening, unless you want to stick around. But we can't tell you a determined time that we'll be back from this closed session. With that, I'd like to thank the public as well as the council and staff. Excellent meeting. It is eight thirty. And Paul, I'm going to turn it over to you to excuse the public and move us to a breakout room.
Yes, your breakout room is set and I'm going to move you there right now.
Oops, sorry.